Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our second meeting of June. Hope everyone's been taking advantage of and enjoying the nice weather, and let's get going.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Of a roll call, Councilmember Delory. Councilmember Mandel. Councilmember Treston.
Present.
Vice President McGinnis. President Bendo.
Present.
The record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Corporation Council Simone Freeman. Will have a salute to the flag.
So I'm gonna ask Councilman Mandel to lead us.
President Bendo. I pledge allegiance
allegiance to the flag of the United States
of America. And to the republic for which it stands with a nation under God
indivisible
with liberty
liberty
and justice for all.
Okay, so I guess we will start with our city managers' report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. To start off with, all of my city managers' reports in the future will be done a little differently. We work in the city as a team, so on every meeting, there will be between two to three departments that will talk about what's going on in their departments because they're better to tell the community what's going on in their departments, and I also want the community to know who they are. So tonight, to start off with first, one of the things I talked about when I first came was that we were going to be more transparent with our financial information. So if you go to the website under Financial Reports and you look under Government Budget and Financial Section, you will see the April 2020 and the May 2020 scorecard. And so that tells you what the city received and spent up through April and also up through May. We've been working on our multi-financial plan. It's curling under progress. And late August, we will have a town financial town hall meeting where we will discuss preliminary June 30th financial information, and we will discuss the five-year multi-plan. In doing some of our research, we discovered that the city is owed approximately $5 million in uncollected revenue. And so I'm happy to say, as of today, we received approximately 600 of that $5 million, and we know approximately another $500,000 is on its way, so that leaves an outstanding balance of 3.9 million that's owed to the city. And we're working extremely hard to get that money into the city. And this money has been owed to the city from 2012 and forward. We also had not spent all of our CDBG money, and so now we are taking 395,000 from prior year CDBG grant, and it's going to be used to repair the elevators in City Hall as well as the pool in the rec center. I want to let everybody know that the farmer's market will have a soft opening tomorrow, and after tomorrow, it will be open every Wednesday and every Saturday. So the departments that I wanted to include today, and they can go one right after the other, will be Phil Regona first from Beach, and then Chief Gillespie for lifeguards, and Joe Brand from the rec center. So Phil, if you want to start off?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Gaden. Firstly, I'd like to thank the city manager and the city council for inviting me tonight to speak a little about the Ocean Beach Park, which is obviously a very big integral part of our city. I have to say, to tell all of you that a changing and fluid time would be an absolute and true understatement. We're all navigating these uncharted waters on the beach together. But we all know our primary responsibility is your safety and our residents' safety. So in regards to the beach park, initially, we were gonna sell beach passes to the beach park on May 4th. That was the idea. Obviously, that didn't work out with the COVID-19 pandemic that we are facing. We didn't know if we were gonna have a beach. We didn't know, well, we have a beach, but we know if we can open it up. When we got direction from the state, we, at that point, understood that we could start selling passes. So two weeks later, May 18th, we started selling our seasonal beach passes, and in short order, we made it exclusively to our residents. I'm really happy to say that sales are brisk. Our residents wanted to get to the beach. And to date, from May 18th until today, we've sold, our revenue has been $1,575,450, which is pretty impressive compared to years past. And that's without selling passes to non-residents or daily passes. We've had nine weekend date pass so far that we have not been open for non-resident dailies. So we really, we've done well, and our residents have kind of indicated that they want to be on their beach. As far as the beach park itself goes, which is the boardwalk and beach, bicycle riding has been a big issue and a big item. We opened it up initially just to bicycle riding from sunrise to 10:00 AM. And that was to keep everybody safe and to make sure that we didn't have too many bikes out there. Our city manager and our city council ultimately decided after a short while that, okay, we can open it up at night again to our residents and beachgoers and boardwalk dwellers from 6:00 PM on. And we've been pretty successful with that. Our boardwalk kiosk that we have, which run along the boardwalk to serve food and other items, are open. And it's been a grab-and-go type of thing, and it's been successful, and people are able to grab something to eat and go with it. So we have our five kiosks open, and they're open from the morning, and they close at sunset. In regards to bathroom accessibility for people on the beach and the boardwalk, we have plenty of bathrooms open for them. We have them on Pacific Beach, Neptune, which is a portable beach, our portable bathroom, Lincoln Riverside, Edwards National, Lafayette, Rams, New York, which is a portable, and Minnesota Beach. Our accessible beaches for individuals that have difficulty getting onto the beach, we have Moby Mats set out, and they're at the following beaches: Lincoln Beach, Riverside, Lafayette, Wyoming, and Minnesota. And in addition to that, if any of our beachgoers has an issue with getting onto the beach or difficulty, we have posted at every one of our entrances the number to lifeguard headquarters, which could be called at 431-1810. And we have the beach chairs, which could be delivered, and a lifeguard will assist you out to the beach if you can't get out there on your own. The special officer program that I'm running, I'm really very proud of these young men and women who are mostly criminal justice majors and are anticipating being police officers in the future, the job they're doing. We have them stationed along the boardwalk, on foot, on the beach, on ATVs, and a Polaris Ranger. A Polaris Ranger is very similar to a golf cart in the sand. It holds two of our supervisors, and it goes back and forth. Over the last, I guess, two weeks, we've noticed that the West End has had a proliferation of people and beachgoers going there. As far as shutting the beach down, it is a very difficult decision to make, and we do not not make that decision lightly. When we decide that a beach cannot be safely socially distanced, distant, distanced, excuse me, and it is overcrowded, we need to shut the entrance off. And I do that in conjunction with our Chief of Lifeguards, Chief Gillespie, his captains and myself. And we don't take that willy-nilly. We don't want to turn a resident away from their beach. We do it for their safety. It is a very well-thought-out action, and it's only done when we finally decide that we can't have that beach open for your safety. And when we do that, I send my special down to make sure that all the beachgoers have their passes also. And if someone has been on the beach prior, and they leave to use whatever they want to do, if they're going to their house and coming back, we let them back on. We don't stop them from coming back on their beach. It's a difficult decision to make, but it's a necessary decision. I don't think it's a forever thing, but it's certainly something that we need to do right now. Over the last two weeks, we've only had two days, June 6th and June 13th, where we've had to stop entry onto some West End beaches. And it's because of the large crowds and the inability to safely social distance. The decision is not an easy decision, like I said, and we only do it after careful thought. Our special officers that are out there, I have four of them assigned strictly to the West End. And they're out there to make sure that everybody has a beach pass. And there's been some issues and some complaints in regards to beach passes not being with every beachgoer. They check and they do what we call a beach sweep, each group. And when they do the groups in the West End, if you don't have a pass, you either get a summons or you're told to leave the beach. The specials themselves have basically had an all-time high with summonses. They've issued 185, I'll say that again, 185 appearance summonses for these type of municipal code violations. And that includes alcohol on the beach, walking on the jetty, illegal entry, no beach pass, et cetera. So although it may appear that there's no enforcement, there is a lot of enforcement. And these special officers are working really hard, and they're issuing summonses, and they're trying their best, and I think very successfully, keeping non-residents out of the West End and the center of town and to make sure that the beach is safe. We'll keep putting one foot in front of the other, and every day is a different scenario. We're in front of it, and we're doing our best to keep you safe. Thank you all.
Thank you, Phil. I want to say thank you for giving myself and the council the credit for opening up the boardwalk and the beaches, but who actually gets the credit is Department of Health because we had to get their approval prior to opening anything up. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody know that the Department of Health had a key role in everything opening. Okay, Chief, you're up.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'd just like to add what Phil, you know, it's very difficult working down in that West End because the reality of it, the kids think they're invincible. And very difficult to have them social distance and forget about masks, they don't wear them. That's the reality of everything. And we're trying hard, and we continue to work towards making the beach better down there. I think as a whole, the beach is doing pretty good. I am taking a few of the city council people, and of course, our city manager has been down there all the time and literally knowing what's going on. She knows a lot about the beach that a lot of city managers didn't care to know. And I gotta give her tremendous credit for that because it's not an easy thing because we do a lot down there. First thing I'm gonna go over is we have been sanitizing all 24 chairs at about 8:15 in the morning before the kids get on the chairs. Because during the week and even after hours before, there's a lot of people that sit up there, and you never know who has what. So every morning at 8:15, we sanitize our chairs. Then all guards that are working on the patrol along with the officers and the EMTs, everybody that works down there, does their morning survey that they answer four questions about the covert. And it goes into City Hall, I think. I think Richie Barrios does the, looking at the, evaluated the the surveys they do. Yes answered, then we contact Richie right away, and he takes it from there usually. We haven't had any, we, excuse me, we've had a couple of yeses, but they were mistakes by two of the lifeguards. I've got to explain something about saves and not, we make saves down there. But the less saves we make, the better the patrol is doing. We do what we call preventative actions, lifeguarding. What they do in California is lifeguard saving. They don't get out of that tower to go down there, tell a person to go over, come in, you're stepping in a hole, watch where you're going, the rip is over here, please move over. That's the kind of things that we do that help us in our pretty good record we have of not losing people. We have that emergency response team that is out there right now during the days that we are, that the patrol is not on the beach. And what we try to do is keep the people out of the water when we have a huge crowd down there. I'll take the whole response team. When it's, we look at the weather religiously, the water religiously, to see how bad it is. We've had a break because the weather, the temperature has been pretty good. It hasn't been going sky-high, so we're not getting huge crowds. We had a couple of days where we did have big crowds down there. Let me see here. Yeah, so after we get going during the day, we try to go around and evaluate everything that we have been doing. I think this new thing we're gonna try with the filling in the beaches that are not there with the out-of-town people, I think it'll work. I think, I shouldn't say I think, I know, by standing on the beach, and we have the boardwalk to look at, you can see the people in line, you can see the people on the beach, it makes it a lot easier for us to evaluate, are we 50% or are we older? The West End is tough because you got that big dune there. You never know who's coming over the hill, so to speak. So that's one of our problems with the West End, too. I wish we had a better way of really seeing what's coming over like we do on the boardwalk. I think that's about it. Does anybody have any, wait a second, I still have one thing. You know, I have a few worries, and this is for everybody to understand. The colleges could be going back to school at the end of July. They're talking about it ending in November. Has anyone heard about that? So that means we will lose lifeguards. Now, every patrol will be going through this, not just us. So I'm hoping that it's pushed back a little bit to the middle of August, but I don't know yet. We haven't heard anything. But we're gonna, if that does happen, we will have to close some beaches as we go along because we won't have enough lifeguards to demand them. So that's just another problem or worries that we're gonna have to look for and that we're trying to prepare for in the future. So are there any questions that you would like to ask?
All right. Thanks, Chief. I don't think anyone has any questions, at least I can't see where anybody has any at this time. It was important that everyone hears about what's going on at the beach and why we have to close some beaches and how things happen because we have been getting a lot of calls and we have been getting a lot of questions. So it was important for the two of them to speak. And I know we've been also getting some questions about summer programs. And so Joe Brand is on, so he can answer those questions. He can give an update from the rec center.
Good evening, everybody. It seems like every few days, we're getting great news with returns to recreation activities and the lifting of certain COVID restrictions, especially with outdoor activities. The latest news we got in terms of recreation came late last week. It has to do with the ability for us to open up parks and playgrounds. We were given the directive late last week. It's at local discretion, provided appropriate distancing of at least six feet is abided by, and that face covering is a ward. So in speaking with Donna, the game plan is for some time this week, maybe Thursday or Friday, to get the playgrounds open. The lone exception would be the Pacific Playground, only because there's a collapsed fence that separates the beach and the playground. It was inundated with sand. That may require an additional day or two for beach maintenance to get in there with payloaders and remove the sand. That's gotta be taken out of there and a, some sort of temporary fencing to be put in until we can build something more solid. In addition to that, the splash parks, they abide by a different set of guidelines than the traditional playgrounds. Once those guidelines are passed along to us, we'll review them and make the appropriate plans to open those splash playgrounds as well. We also got some information about youth sports, hopefully getting the green light sometime in early July. We're excited about that. We've been in contact with a lot of the local youth athletic programs in addition to the programs that we offer. And we're hoping little by little, we can start getting kids back to the activities that they've missed for the last three months. Beyond that, as everybody knows, the decision was made not to open the summer camps this year. It was a very difficult decision to make, but in the end, in fairness to the safety and well-being of our children and the guidelines set forth, it just wasn't gonna be prudent. From a technical standpoint, an logistical standpoint, for us to have the kids in the schools in the situation or in the atmosphere that we have there. So that's where we're at now. Hopefully, more good news is on the horizon.
Thank you, Joe. I did miss one person. John McGally wanted to speak quickly about the new clock, the train station.
Sure. Thanks, Donna. So as everyone will recall, Assemblyman Wiesenberg made a very generous donation of $25,000 in January of this year to replace the clock, the historic clock, in front of the Long Island Railroad Station. It's been a long wait, but at long last, that clock came in earlier on this week and was installed. Harvey and I sat and watched them along with Donna to install part of it. Harvey is ecstatic, as are the rest of us. You know, it's just a great symbolic gesture on his part and something uplifting for the city. And there is going to be a plaque in front of it that Harvey dedicated to the timeless tradition of law enforcement to those who have served and those who continue to serve. So again, following on Joe's heels, some more good news.
And then to end my report, I just wanted to mention about three weeks ago, Mr. Jake Jacoby was down at the lifeguard facility on the beach eating lunch with one of his colleagues. And his colleague began to choke, and Mr. Jacoby saved him from choking. It was an intense minute or two there, but Mr. Jacoby was able to make sure that what was stuck in the gentleman's throat, that it was unlocked and that the gentleman survived, and he's doing, he's doing well. And so I believe that we should tell our employees that we appreciate them. And so I want Jake Jacoby to know that I appreciate what he did as a lifeguard and as a firefighter, but one, as a colleague, that he was there at a time of need, and he did what was correct. And I'm just thankful that he was there, and I'm sure the gentleman that he saved was there is very thankful. And so I want to say to Jake Jacoby that I appreciate you and the work that you have done. That ends my report.
Okay. Thank you, Donna. Next, we're going to go to Councilman Mandel.
Thank you, President Bendo. I just wanted to briefly talk on something I observed Saturday night. Last Saturday night, June 13th, one of our residents, John Nichols, found a disoriented elderly man wandering the streets here in Long Beach. Mr. Nichols without hesitation stepped in, transported the man to the Long Beach Police Department to make sure the man was safe, at which time Sergeant Walsh and also Officer Walpole assisted. And the three of them made sure that this man was returned home safely. This was late Saturday night. It was dark. The city was busy. This gentleman was definitely in need of assistance, and the three of them stepped up and answered the call. So on behalf of the city, I want to thank them and also highlight that Mr. Nichols' acts serve as a reminder of what really the true Long Beach spirit and what makes this city one of the best places in the world to live, which is our residents. So thank you, Mr. Nichols. Thank you, Sergeant Walsh, and thank you, Officer Walpole. Thank you, President Bendo.
Okay, great. Good story to hear. We're gonna hear now from Councilwoman Treston.
These past several weeks, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
These past several weeks and months have been challenging, to say the least. Our hands were filled with the fiscal crisis, and then COVID-19 hit. These have tested us all as individuals and as a society in unprecedented ways. Then the killing of George Floyd happened. Unfortunately, this killing was not unprecedented. And it should force our society to take a hard look in the mirror. We are not born racist. Racism is learned. Racism is destructive and divisive. A practice that needs to be left in the past. That said, as elected officials of this city, what we feel we must make unequivocally clear is that hate has absolutely no place here. We are diverse and a caring community. Whether it comes from outside our community or from within, hate and discrimination will not be tolerated in Long Beach. In the days ahead, we'll be making an announcement about a virtual community meeting where we can all come together to discuss how Long Beach can lead by example and forge a path forward towards a more equitable and just community. Thank you, President Bendo.
Thank you, Liz. Something that needed to be said. And then I guess, before we move on to the agenda, we've been hearing from a lot of people about the situation with the bars and the restaurants, particularly in the West End. We are sensitive to the impact the pandemics had on our businesses and the workforce. And quite frankly, we've worked very hard to let the businesses know the rules and have issued them a lot of warnings in the hopes of avoiding further economic hardship. But the governor's made it clear that he is taking enforcement seriously. The city's not going to risk our beach, our boardwalk, or the other businesses being shut down because a few certain establishments refuse to abide by the rules. It's unfair to our residents. It's unfair to the businesses playing by the rules, and it's definitely unfair to the businesses still waiting to reopen. During a conference call we had earlier today, staff members from the governor's office, the New York State Department of Health, and the New York State Liquor Authority reminded, that's the word, reminded, city officials that gatherings of more than 10 people are still prohibited by the governor's executive order. Individuals or businesses who violate the orders are subject to a maximum fine of $1,000 per violation per day. We were also reminded that the penalties for bars and restaurants that operate outside of the governor's executive orders and the New York State Liquor Authority's guidelines for outdoor, takeout, indoor delivery, food services shall be subject to monetary fines ranging from $10,000 to $100,000. So, beginning this week, if we see businesses not adhering to the guidelines they agreed to, those businesses can expect to be issued summonses. We've tried very hard to work with the business community and they have been warned multiple times, but the governor has made it clear that the time for education is over and it's time for businesses to adhere to the guidelines that they agreed to. So we look forward to seeing full compliance moving forward. So with that, um, I guess we can move on to our agenda.
Okay, item number one is a resolution designating a responsible local official for the city's Edwards Boulevard project.
Okay, do we have anyone that's, uh, gonna address that? I, was Commissioner Miranda on?
Yes, hold on, I got to unmute him. Um, John, you're unmuted.
Okay, um, we have a grant from the New York State Department of Transportation, a TAP grant, to redo Edwards Avenue from, uh, Broadway, uh, from, uh, West Park down to Broadway. Uh, that contract has been bid. Uh, we have a reasonable price on the contract and now we're filing all the paperwork with the New York State Department of State and they require having a local official that they can have communication back and forth with. Generally on these type projects, it's one of either Joe or I. Uh, so Joe's got a pretty full plate, so I volunteer to be the person that they would contact.
Okay, uh, are there any questions from the council?
Um, just one question, uh, President Bendo from Mr. Miranda. Um, John, what would your timeframe be for the project? Um, in other words, you're gonna be the local designated official. Do you foresee the project, um?
The bid documents are being reviewed right now by New York State DOT. Uh, their review will take about four to six weeks. We hope that by end of September, uh, at a, a meeting prior to September, we'll be able to come to the council and ask for authorization to proceed with the contract. Uh, maybe the starting date for the work would be October. But we'd like to start sooner.
Thank you.
It all depends on how quick DOT reviews the plans, uh, the, reviews the bids.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, did we get any questions from the public?
Uh, yes, we did get one question from Allison Blanchett. I think it's been answered, but I'll give it a read. So is item one due to a change in staffing from the original project proposal? Will you explain why this is being voted on? I think Commissioner, Commissioner Miranda said, um, because it's a requirement from the TAP program. So the other part of her question was if you have an update on the project timeline, that would be great to note as well. And we just heard from the commissioner that he's open to start in October, if not sooner. So I believe that answers those two questions.
Okay, was that the only question we got? From the public, that was it?
Yes, it was.
Okay, then I guess, uh, we can move on.
Item two is a resolution adopting a comprehensive solid waste management plan for the city of Long Beach.
Okay, I guess, uh, Commissioner Miranda again?
Yeah, this is, uh, Joe Fabrizio, I'll take this one. Um, just wanna give you a quick background on this. Um, the original solid waste management plan, um, that the city has is basically from the period of 1995 to 2009. Um, obviously it has expired. Um, the regulations require that municipalities maintain plans for a minimum of 10-year periods. Um, back in 2012, we actually did create slash, uh, update and make a new solid waste management plan and we submitted to the DEC for approval. Unfortunately, we received comments back on that submission in 2014, two years after it was submitted. So then we had to update it again and we submitted the document on October 15, 2015. Three years later, in, uh, in February 2018, we received comments again from the DEC. And at that point, all the regulations regarding solid waste had changed. Um, so now we had to go through the whole process and update it again. So this most recent version that I, I sent to all the, the council people and is posted, um, is posted, uh, in the city's Public Works Department, it's posted online, it's in the city clerk's office, it's in the library, covers the period of 2019 to 2028 and it complies with all current regulatory requirements. Um, the solid waste management plan update, it basically takes a comprehensive look at the city's solid waste management program. It includes sections on a, a full detailed description of the city of Long Beach, which they call the planning unit. It includes, um, all the quantity of solid waste generated and disposed of, um, as well as disposal destinations. Um, it contains projections for future solid waste disposal. Um, there's a complete implementation plan and schedule for future program elements. Um, and it also discusses like potential education oppo- education opportunities to increase awareness of recycling. Uh, we did have a public meeting on this and it was, um, October 22nd, 2019, which was a requirement of the DEC. Um, and one of the last requirements is, it's required that the council adopt this local solid waste management plan update before we can submit it, hopefully for final approval by the DEC. Um, and that, that's a pretty quick overview of, uh, the solid waste management plan update. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Okay, any questions from the council? All right, and just, uh, so people know, this is, um, if you're not familiar with this, Joe and the Public Works folks put a huge amount of work into this. This document is 722 pages. So if you need some reading material for the beach, that'll keep you busy for a while. So, uh, any questions from the council? Okay, did we get any questions from the public?
One question from the public, from Allison Blanchett again. The agenda notes that, that LSWMP update is available to the public at the library, at the clerk's office, the Department of Public Works. Because the library and city hall are currently closed, would you need to amend the agenda item and make a note of this? I spoke with both the clerk and Corporation's Council's office and because this is a project that spans out into 2028 and because it's available online, we are all hopeful that folks, if they are so desirous, will be able to go to the library or city hall sometime before 2028, um, when this pandemic wraps up. Uh, so it does not need to be amended because, uh, that information will still be valid in the hopefully not too distant future and because it is available online now.
Okay, uh, were there any other questions from the public?
That was the only other question on this item.
Okay, then we can move on.
Okay, and lastly, item number three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the County of Nassau for the providing of the review of tax grievances for the 2021-22 tax year and a budget amendment.
Okay, and I think we have Mr. Barry O'Son who's gonna talk about this one.
Right, good evening all, um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, so just the overview, this is a municipal agreement, uh, between Nassau County and the city. The purpose of this agreement is, um, is such that the city basically handles all of the county's commercial and residential tax grievances that the county deems conflict cases, uh, meaning cases of people who are in the Department of Assessment who are being assessed and things of that nature. Um, the rate would be $95 per residential tax grievance and 250 an hour for commercial tax grievances. Uh, both of those rates also include reimbursement from the county for reasonable and customary expenses or activities that are incurred, uh, by our staff. The duration of this agreement is only a year and that's only, uh, what the law allows for. It's, it's a year-to-year thing, so we couldn't do more than one year at a time, even if we wanted to. Um, at this point, I believe the county's budget is about $32,750 for this and we're conservatively budgeting at $30,000. Um, so we hope this to be basically, the goal of this agreement essentially is to make it a source of revenue for the city, um, and pending its success after this year, uh, making it a recurring source of revenues, uh, revenue for the city, excuse me. And with that.
Okay, so, so just in layman's terms, this is basically, if like a Long Beach city employee wanted to grieve their taxes, it wouldn't be appropriate for Long Beach staff to review that grievance since they probably know the person, so the county will do it and vice versa. We'll be doing it for county people that are conflicted out because perhaps they're an employee or something like that of the county.
That's correct. This is essentially a reciprocal agreement where each, each, uh, the county and the municipality, which is us, uh, handle each other's conflict cases. So if Ray decides, I'm sorry, the tax assessor decides a case is, you know, a conflict because of an employee being assessed, then it goes to the county and vice versa. You're right, John.
Okay, um.
It's important to note that it's just not employees, it would include council members. So that nobody thinks that council members will get a special, uh, like, you know, their assessments will be done in the city of Long Beach. They will not.
Yeah, actually I think I was the impetus for this because my wife went to grieve our taxes and we found out we couldn't, uh, because of this. So, uh, we have to, once this is passed, if we decide to grieve our taxes, it'll actually have to be done by the county. Um, so, uh, which is a good thing, to take any conflict out. So any questions from the council?
Just one comment that I did, uh, I did review it with, uh, the controller, uh, Ina Resnick and, and I didn't know something like this existed, but I'm very happy that it does. That's why I have to say thank you.
Okay, and we actually, we had asked the, uh, that, uh, we had the comptroller have the tax assessor actually put a, a, uh, budget together this that shows the anticipated hours worked and things like that, just to make sure that, uh, uh, this wasn't gonna cost the city more than the city was gonna be making doing it. Um, so did we get any, uh, questions from the public on this one?
There were none.
Okay, uh, assuming, uh, one last ask, if there's any more questions from the council? Okay, and we could move on.
Okay, on to the voting. So item one is a resolution designating a responsible local official for the city's Edwards Boulevard project. So I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Truston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item two is a resolution adopting a comprehensive solid waste management plan for the city of Long Beach. So I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, I'd like to thank Commissioner Miranda and Joe Fabrizio for a lot of work that went into this plan and I'm happy to vote yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Truston. Uh, you're muted, Councilmember Truston.
I would also like to thank the Department of Public Works on their effort. It was a very large document, there was good public input. I was at the meeting back, and with that, I vote yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item three is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the County of Nassau for the providing of the review of tax grievances for the 2021-22 tax year and a budget amendment. I want you to just move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory. Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Truston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
We'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I will.
Who was that?
Me, Liz.
Okay, thank you. Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Um, say that, I mean.
Vote, a motion, uh, vote to close the meeting.
Vote to close, okay, yes.
Councilmember Mandel.
Yes.
Councilmember Truston.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, good and welfare, did we get, uh, what did we get for good and welfare?
So we have, I'll just note that the questions that were asked for the June 2nd meeting, uh, those questions and their responses are up on the city's website at this time. And we got, it looks like questions from 11 individuals. Uh, Roy Lester, Ed Smith, Marie Brutus, Karen Cybernet, Robin Donovan, Ellen Bloom, Lisa Santinos, Robert Saminsky, Daniela Halles, Eric Fox and Albert Aldercoke are the folks that we have questions for and those will all be responded to in advance of the next meeting.
Okay, uh, then with that, I guess we are done. So, uh, thanks for attending, folks, and, uh, have a good evening. Enjoy the, uh, the rest of your evening.
Don't forget to fill out your census.
Don't forget to fill out your census. We're falling behind everyone else.
Have a good evening.
Night.
Have a good evening, thank you everybody.